Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission for January 12th, 2009. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask for any public comment on any item not listed on the agenda.
And Commissioner Powell, I do have two requests. First one is Ms. Kaczynski, and then followed by Ms. Hogan.
Thank you.
I missed a couple of meetings, and I would like to talk about the codes and the rules that are on the slide. We've already gone through that, haven't you?
We have.
Okay.
But you're welcome to make some-
I would like to. Okay. Christine Kaczynski, Incorporated, Clackamas County. Due to heavy rain and snow the past three weeks, landslides, mud flows, and street closures have occurred in Oregon City. Homeowners in the Lake Oswego area, as well as a business in Sandy, have borne large losses due to landslides. Homeowners are unable to purchase landslide insurance in the United States, and therefore bear the entire financial losses, with many of them winding up in bankruptcy. Citizens remain concerned, and have every right to, since state disclosure laws are not being upheld by our cities nor our realtors. The only resource left open to citizens is litigation. I'm concerned regarding your upgraded codes and ordinances governing over development in steep slopes and landslides. I'm concerned they're not stringent enough. The new guidelines speak only to slopes of 25% or greater. However, the city of Portland has new guidelines that regulate slopes of 20% or greater, and the guidelines in Marion County are set to govern over slopes of 10% or greater. Please understand that damaging slides on Holly Lane have occurred on slopes as little as 14%, with the loss of an entire home, with slides at the Street of Dreams also occurring on slopes of less than 25%. I believe it would be good for Oregon City to compare why their upgraded codes don't seem to be more lax than those of other municipalities, as well as comparing grading codes and ordinances, especially those from the city of Salem. In the recent slide in the Twiliger area, all the affected homeowners have hired their own geological experts, as well as attorneys, to represent them. Again, litigation certainly remains the only avenue open to homeowners. I feel it would be advantageous for Oregon City to have stronger codes, ordinances, and regulations as the city develops into these challenging areas. By undertaking these actions now, it could be a huge benefit to the city as future litigation arises. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just for your and everyone's information, we will, this has been passed forward to the City Commission, so there will be ample time to make, again, make your comment to the City Commission for any changes to those codes that they see fit. And we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And the second one?
Come on forward.
Kathy Hogan. Two things. First, my neighborhood association meeting is this Thursday at 7:00 at the Methodist Church on South End Road. So everybody's welcome to come. Hazel Grove and South End have a joint meeting, and we do have one land use action that's coming up. And then the second thing, I would like to thank all the people that came out and helped fill a stocking. We did 2,489 stockings this year. That is 89 more than last year.
Great.
And I would like to thank Beaver Creek Telephone for letting us have a workshop there. And we can use fabric, cotton please, so that we can start making the 3,000 again for this year, the end of this year. So I would like to thank all those that helped.
Well, thank you, and thank your whole group. You guys do a wonderful job. We appreciate it.
Well, 12 years added, I think I've got it down now.
Well, just keep, you know, 10% increase year after year. It's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other comments not listed on the agenda for this evening? Okay, seeing none, then we will move forward. We have no minutes to look at this evening, so we'll get started on our Planning Commission hearing. This is CP 0805. And Tony, I didn't have my document. Maybe the attorney would like to read my. Do you have that handy?
Yes, please.
Do you have it?
I do.
I don't either. Sorry.
It's all right. I will make a statement.
Thank you.
This is the time set for consideration of CP 0805, Concept Master Plan, DP 0803, Detailed Master Plan, TP 0811 subdivision, US 0803 unstable slope geologic hazards, and WR 0821 Water Quality Resource Overlay District application. This is a quasi judicial hearing, which means there are certain quasi judicial procedures we will follow that used to be, oh, they are still located on a board right behind us. The applicable approval criteria have been identified in a staff report that has been made available on the city's website, and I think outside the door. Because this is a quasi judicial hearing, all parties have an obligation to raise all issues in order to preserve them on appeal. That means you need to raise them as part of this proceeding in order to preserve them for the land use board of appeals. At this point, I will ask additionally, all constitutional issues must be raised in order to preserve them on appeal. That includes takings or any other constitutional violation you believe as applicable to this proceeding. At this time, I will ask any of the planning commissioners if they have any ex parte communications, bias, or conflict of interest they wish to disclose.
Yes, I do. The project team, the architectural team consists of the architect, who is LRS Architects, and the project lead assigned to this is a very good friend of mine that I've known for 20 years. He's also an architect. We used to work together as well. We have not discussed this project whatsoever. In fact, he's made a point of not telling me about this project when we go out for lunch. So, and, you know, which is exactly what he should do. So I feel I can make a, I can make a unbiased decision about this, and if anybody has any issue with that, they need to bring it up at this point if I should sit on this board for this particular application.
Does anyone wish to question Commissioner Lejoie about those contacts? I see none.
Okay, and I see none from the other commissioners at this time. Thank you very much, Carrie. Okay, Tony, we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Chairperson Powell. Evening, commissioners. I'll be presenting what is the beginning of a two-step hearing process we're gonna, we're proposing, a minimum two-step hearing process for the Cove here in front of the Planning Commission. As you may recall, this was originally scheduled for a hearing on December 15th of 2008. Due to weather, we canceled that hearing. Prior to that night, we did receive two requests for a continuance of the public hearing by interested parties, and we were going to be recommending at that time a continuance to the January 26th hearing. If an application, if someone requests a continuance at that first hearing, we have to grant it. So what we did is because we didn't have a hearing, and we didn't have the ability to continue this to another date, we went back and re-noticed to all interested parties and property owners, put it back in the paper, and reposted the site indicating that we'd be having a hearing tonight, and that we would also be requesting that you do take public testimony from the applicant, and everyone interested in commenting tonight, and then leave the record open and continue the hearing to the 26th, allowing additional time for more information to be submitted into the record. So at this point, what we're, staff's proposing to do is present you a general overview of the project, walk through the process of the applications being submitted for, really just give you the general overview, walking through some of the phasing that's proposed, some of the improvements, square footage and whatnot. And then at the next hearing, we will have providing you the staff report addressing all of the approval criteria. So through this application, the applicant, you know, the main, the main application is the concept development plan. What the applicant is requesting is an eight-phase development of this site over 10 years. Included in that concept development plan are approvals for a subdividing the property into six lots and five tracks. There's also a water resource review for, and what the applicant, through that water resource review, it addresses the mitigation on the site, replanting on the site. Through this application, the Clackamas Cove and the river are identified as anadromous fish-bearing streams per our code that has a 200-foot buffer. Within our water quality resource area application, we do have the ability to reduce that buffer down to 50 feet if the area is degraded per our code, and it's been used for other uses such as industrial or commercial in the past. And both of those seem to, seem to apply here. But those will be findings that we provide as we move through the, when we bring the staff report forward to you. They are also applying for an unstable slopes review and development within the floodplain. Now, the, what our floodplain requires, really in this site, is the balance cut and fill, meaning wherever you add fill, you need to balance that by cutting the same amount. The applicant will be demonstrating that on an overall site, how they're accomplishing that through the approval process. And then with a concept plan, we also have detailed development plans. So the concept plan really addresses with the big picture, phasing, infrastructure improvements, any adjustments that might be requested to our development code in order to implement, implement the project. So the concept plan doesn't actually authorize any development on the site. So what the applicant has done is they've concurrently requested what we call a detailed development plan, which implements that concept plan if it's approved. And they've requested approval for phases one and two of the detailed development plan. And so you'll see that as, as the applicant comes in in subsequent phases, implement phases three, or four, or five, how they do that is to submit for a detailed development plan with the city. And as long as that detailed development plan is aligned with the approved concept plan, that approval is done at the staff level, unless there is some variance, or they want to change phasing, or square footage is changed. So unless there's some major deviations identified by our code, it will come in as a detailed development plan. The detailed development plans for phases one and two are coming before you tonight because the applicant chose to run them concurrently with the concept plan. So that's why you'll be seeing phases one and two in your staff report in two weeks. So what the applicant has proposed is development around, around Clackamas Cove. We have the Willamette River, Clackamas River. Clackamas Cove is the water body in the middle. You have 205 running north-south. You have 99E and the bridge, nice steady hand there, 99E across the Clackamas River. And so you have Main Street, Clackamas Park. Main Street comes down along the south side of Clackamas Cove underneath 205. Here's Tri-City Sewer Facility. This would be the I-205, Highway 213 interchange, to give you some idea of where this is located. The subject sites includes nine parcels with four property owners. It's approximately 92 acres, 46 of which are the Cove itself, the water body. The applicant has proposed a development that includes, of the 46 remaining acres, 33 are for public parks, open space, and then that, the 13 acres for the proposed uses in the mixed-use downtown, all of which are permitted, including the commercial, the office, the residential uses, medical office building. What they've proposed is approximately 16,000 square feet of restaurant, 42,300 of general office, 80,000 square feet of medical, 224 condos, a recreational facility, and then associated infrastructure improvements to Main Street, Agnes, as well as improvements along and around the Cove in terms of restoration work of the existing vegetation on the site. If you've been out to the site, you're well aware that some areas are extremely degraded. The application also includes the development of a public park, walking path network through the site, including an esplanade right along the western edge of, western edge of the As I was talking, discussing earlier, is the phasing proposed in this application. You did receive the full application submitted by the applicant, where they went through and addressed all of the criteria, and this is taken from their application concerning the phasing of the project. Phase one, which you see in green around the site, includes the masquerading, masquerading of the site, preparation for the infrastructure and infrastructure development of Main, which includes a relocation of Main Street, and some initial work along Agnes, connecting up along Tri-City's side over there, and then some additional construction of a public park area, open space area in the North Park area up here. Phase two would include additional grading for the, for the condo pads, as well as the esplanade. And as you may recall, along this edge, it's a very, very steep drop-off. As part of the balanced wet cut and fill, as well as, you know, being able to draw this site and utilize that resource, the applicant is proposing to, to cut this back to a much, much generaler slope, three-to-one slope. And then when that occurs, you'll be looking, we'll be looking at the mitigation replanting work that would, that would need to occur in there to comply with our water quality resource area. This would also, in phase two, include, like I said, the plantings, as well as the esplanade development. Phase three is down in this corner. This is the location for the proposed medical office building. When you get into phase four, you start getting into construction of residential, as well as additional infrastructure that's necessary to accommodate that, that residential development. Phase four, I'm sorry, phases five and six include additional residential development and infrastructure along Agnes in order to support that development. The next phase would include the restaurant office complex up in this corner, and then the last phase would include some of the in-water work that's proposed by the applicant. As I stated earlier, the applicant is proposing these eight phases over a timeline of 10 years to accommodate, to accomplish that work. One of the issues with the site is the floodplain. We do have a flood management section of our code, and as I stated earlier, one of the main parts is the balanced cut and fill in order to protect the storage capacity in our floodplain. By, by providing balanced cut and fill, what that avoids is putting fill in there and causing the floodwaters to raise to a higher level than is historically occurring, putting the onus on other property owners. So by balanced cutting and fill on the property, you're, you're assuming that extra capacity. You're not losing any capacity on the site to address those flooding events that do occur in this area. The base flood elevation is 50.7 feet. Our code does require all habitable spaces to be one foot above, above that floodplain. So when we say habitable, we're talking living. So what you'll see in some of the proposed concepts for the residential is the residential be raised up almost to the second story. And what that does is by utilizing those garages, they can be designed in such a way to serve for flood capacity and storage. So they, they're not considered a habitable space in the dwelling, and there are certain criteria in our code that when those phases come in, they would need to, to meet our building design for building within a floodplain. Since those developments aren't proposed in this section of the code, we're not addressing them. They're not bringing in the residential component, so we're not walking through every criteria of the flood management overlay. When those applications come in, they'll need to meet the code criteria at that time. But the sections that are applicable include that balanced cut and fill in order to show that it is feasible on this site to accomplish that within this flood zone. We did have the applicant prepare a transportation analysis report for the area. We'll be presenting additional findings at the next hearing. We did have them look at Highway 213, Highway, at the interchange with 205, Washington Street, Redland, 99E at Firestone Alley, Dune, the on-and-off ramps to 205, and several other local streets, Main Street, 12th, et cetera, in the city. So they did a very extensive review of the transportation system. Now, we'll be bringing those findings back at the next hearing. Can say that, you know, Ed, the applicant has already proposed relocating Main Street. It's currently located within our water quality resource area. They're proposing to relocate it outside of our buffer if we do grant the reduction from 200 feet to 50 feet when we review that as our code criteria, as well as infrastructure improvements to Agnes to serve the remainder of the site and get to that northern section of the, of the project. The mixed-use building in this section of the project, in addition, the applicant, through the water quality resource area, we have, we have a variance process. The applicant is requesting to encroach for, for this building into the 50-foot vegetated corridor. Due to the site limitations, Main is fixed coming underneath 99E there, and then, you know, some of the limitations and extra requirements of providing parking for this, for that site, as well as the floodplain requirements for building that site, they are requesting a variance to reduce that vegetated corridor in that section. I can tell you that with the, with the relocation of Main, you pick up a little over 11,000 square feet of vegetated corridor, riparian corridor that is currently pavement. The encroachment from the building is a little over 4,000 feet, 4,000 square feet, so you're talking a net gain in the riparian corridor around, in this project of roughly 6,000 square feet. But we will, we'll be detailing all that for you in our staff report. Through the concept plan, you can request adjustments to our municipal code. And, you know, one of the, the benefits of the concept plan is it gives both the city and the applicant the reassurance of what they're agreeing to on these long-term projects. And one of those is that we are agreeing that the code that is in place when your approval be the code we'll utilize for future developments, so that something drastically doesn't change in our code, which couldn't possibly be feasible on the site. So in essence, the code that we're creating with these adjustments will be the code that will apply to future development plans for, for the site. Some examples, they are requesting adjustment, our water quality resource area currently limits pathways to 12-foot. They're proposing the esplanade to be 20-foot, so that would be an adjustment that they're requesting to build that larger esplanade. Currently, our office parking allows a maximum of 3.33 parking stalls per gross, thousand gross square foot leasable space. They are requesting five per thousand for the medical office building. They're requesting adjustments to the perimeter and interior parking lot landscaping. They've provided proposals of what they'd like to see, and so we'll be reviewing that against our code criteria and see if we have any concerns when we bring that, that forward. Additional adjustments would be to, our code requires you to be within a certain feet of, of a public right-of-way. In this case, it's not advantageous to have them facing the public right-of-way in 205 when really the resource is the Cove. So it's adjustments like that where our code, you know, doesn't really fit a large concept plan process like this with, with this many acres and, and this, this, the problem, the, trying to work with the constraints of the site. So those will be things that we'll be bringing forward to you as well, but just to give you a heads-up that that's what you'll be seeing in our, in our staff report. And this is the overall schematic of the proposed, of the proposal. As you can see, the relocation of Main Street pulls it out, and then it continues on underneath I-205, medical office building complex, riparian corridor enhancement along the esplanade that would continue along the whole frontage of the proposed residential office, connecting to the open space park area at the end, and then trail network out onto the little peninsula along, separating the Clackamas Cove, Clackamas Cove from the Clackamas River. We also have the last phase, which included the mixed-use building in this section up So with that, I'll go ahead and stop and see if you have any questions or clarifications that you need, and then if not, we'll go ahead and turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Okay. None? Sorry, any questions at this point, the staff? No? Okay. Let's just move forward then, and the applicant can come up and make their presentation. If you'll introduce yourself and your city residents, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Serbone. I'm a planner with WRG Design Incorporated. Live in Portland, Oregon. My firm is also located in Portland, Oregon. I'm here this evening on behalf of Pacific Property Search to present the master plan for the Cove development in Oregon City. Along with me this evening are the developers, Ed Darrow and Randy Tyler, our lead civil engineer, Chetamir Jessick, as well as the project manager, and we also have Phil Worth in the back there from Kittelson Associates who prepared the transportation impact analysis. So as I said, we're here to provide an overview of the project, and more importantly, to listen to the concerns of the community, as well as yourself. I'll start off with giving a brief overview of the project. Chetamir will talk a little bit about some of the low-impact design aspects of the project, and then Ed and Randy will give you kind of insight into their vision and what they'd like to see happen on the site. So as Tony said, we are requesting a approval of a concept development plan, as well as a detailed development plan for phases one and two, tentative subdivision approval, a water quality resource permit, and a natural hazard resource permit. The Clackamas Cove area was incorporated in the city of Oregon City's Urban Renewal District in 1991, and since that time, many goals have been articulated through the comprehensive plan and other long-range documents that you have at the city, kind of helping frame the vision for what's going to happen at the Cove. Cove consists of approximately 92 acres. The entire, the entire site is zoned mixed-use downtown, and the Cove master plan anticipates development of the site consistent with MUD zoning. All the uses that are identified for the site are allowed uses within that zoning. And as Tony noted, we're proposing development over a 10-year period with an eight-phase The area will provide new public parks, as well as preserve and enhance existing vegetation, natural areas. Visitors to the Cove will include folks that live there, as well as members of the community that want to go enjoy the natural setting. So in addition to the new public parks and paths, there'll also be waterfront restaurants, where diners will be able to enjoy views of the activity in the Cove. The Cove will provide up to 224 waterfront condominiums in six buildings along the eastern edge of the shore. And as Tony said, a mixed-use waterfront building would be located on the peninsula looking out over the Cove. And there will also be public parks, area for, let's see, let's see, we'll have the largest public park is going to be in this area here, which we've been referring to as North Park. Then there'll also be, obviously, the restoration that's going to occur along this peninsula and this peninsula, along with the pathway system that interconnects. And then we have this mixed-use building here. We have future medical facilities here, and again, there's six condominium buildings here. So phase one is going to include grading. Primarily, that's one of the things we need to do, as Tony mentioned, is balance the cut and fill within the floodplain. So we'll be grading the medical office area. We'll be grading the North Park area, just do it up here, the recreation sales area, which is down here, basically all of the area that's shown within that green, we'll be doing rough grading to balance the cut and fills. Infrastructure that'll be going in. Main Street will be constructed to its full development. Agnes Avenue will be constructed to its full development for this portion, and then we're proposing a 20-foot paved turnpike section along the rear of the buildings connecting with the new park. And then we're proposing a 20-foot gravel section from this point forward to Washington as emergency access. Utilities will be provided in Main Street and portions of Agnes. The North Park will be landscaped and developed to its full vision. The water quality resource area, portions of it, the portions where we'll actually be doing the grading and the cut and fill- be doing the grading and the cut and fill, will be approved along with Phase One. So, those are primarily along this area here. And then, we're also going to be providing the landscaping and development of the, call it the landscape monument at the entrance, but it's basically going to be the gateway to the community. And of course, we're also requesting approval of a detailed development plan for Phase Two. And Phase Two is shown here in yellow, involves some additional grading activity to get the sites prepped. It involves the work along the esplanade area and the kind of final grading for condos three and four. It also includes the final development of the esplanade and the landscaping associated with it. So, at the end of Phase Two, you would have, you know, this area here, the park, and then these areas here would all be a nice park-like setting. We are also requesting ability for tentative approval of subdivision. So, the subdivision includes six lots. The lots are mainly intended to facilitate development of condominiums, the mixed-use building, things that we discussed. We're also proposing to create five tracks, and the tracks are going to be used to encompass the open space areas and facilitate transfer of those areas to public amenities. And just, that's a lot, these three here are lots, we've got a lot over here, and we have a small lot for that recreation building, and the rest of them are tracks. As Tony mentioned, we are in the flood hazard overlay as shown here with this hatching. We've got the site in here. The site's identified by FEMA as a 100-year flood area. The flood height is 50.7 feet above mean sea level is the 100-year flood area, and we're proposing to construct all buildings within the area to 52 feet, so it's about five inches above what your minimum would be, that one foot above the base flood elevation. As Tony mentioned, we're also in the water quality resource area, and the water quality resource area there is primarily because of the Anadromus, Fish Baron, Clackamas, and the Clackamas Cove, but then there's also two potential wetlands that were identified on your local wetland inventory up on that peninsula right there. We are proposing not to do any activity in that area aside from removing invasive species and replanting with native species, so we're not proposing to any negative impacts to those resources that are on the peninsula. This is kind of a good explanation or cross-section of what Tony was describing. This is, obviously, the condominium buildings here, we have Cove down here and the ordinary water line, and if you look at this line that's right here, that's what your existing bank looks like. It kind of flattens out and then just drops off quite steeply right into the water body. And so, what we're proposing to do as part of our balanced cut and fill is bring this to a more gradual three-to-one slope. It does kind of two things, it provides better access to the resource for folks that do want to get down there, and also provides better habitat for wildlife. So, this is the esplanade area here, this would be more of your kind of traditional landscaping from this point forward where these folks are, all the way down to the actual water is going to be native plantings, and so it's going to provide very nice habitat compared to what's out there on the majority of the site right now. As Tony noted, we also have some geological hazards on the site. The property is located in both Zone A and Zone B of the relative earthquake hazard map. What that means is the area is susceptible to earthquakes. It also contains sites that are, portions of the site that are over 35%, and those are those areas primarily shown in red around Clackamas Cove. We commissioned a report by Ash Creek and Associates, geotechnical engineers, and they did not identify any hazards on the site that should be avoided, and they also concluded that the site can be developed as proposed with proper precautions, and that report is included within the application. So, another thing we'll be doing while we're out there is habitat enhancement, and so Clackamas Cove is home to many species of birds, reptiles, fish, and mammals. We're going to be, as I said, we're going to be doing some restorative plantings along here to create better value, better habitat value, and then along these areas here, primarily the peninsulas, we'll be inventorying those areas for invasive species, removing those, replacing those with native species. Plantings will be designed to encourage nesting and feeding opportunities. Originally, when Ed and Randy were looking at developing this area, they had, kind of had some ideas of possibly doing some development off this area. After doing some more research, they determined that there is a pretty good habitat for this area for several different types of mammals. That area, again, has been set aside and left for nature to prevail. So, one of the things that Ed and Randy were very interested in, very concerned about is the concept of low-impact design, and they're very interested in LEED, Leadership and Environmental Energy Design. I'm sure you folks have heard about that. So, that is something that we're looking at considering on the site, and since we're looking at doing that, we've incorporated several low-impact design principles into development of the project. One of those is dark sky lighting, and so, all lighting on the site, whether it's, you know, a sconce on the side of the building or an actual street light, will be shielded and directed down to help keep the light from ruining people's views of the stars. In addition to that, we'll also be doing some low-impact designs on the site with our stormwater. We're very excited about this project at WRG because it is an opportunity for us to showcase some of our low-impact design principles and actually incorporate several of them onto the site. And Ashley, Chetamir, who is the civil engineer, but he is also our water resources director, and stormwater is very near and dear to his heart, is going to come up here and talk a little bit about the stormwater design for the site.
Good evening. My name is Chetamir Jessic. I'm at WRG Design, I'm a principal water resource engineer, and I also live in non-incorporated Clackamas County. As you guys are aware, this is, this project is located near Clackamas Cove, which is very sensitive, and for that reason, we engaged into some innovative stormwater design. Our goal is to maximize water quality for this area and also minimize downstream impacts. We would be implementing four different BMPs for the site, previous pavement, rain gardens, vegetated filter strips, and vegetated swales. Previous pavement, for most part, will be located in front of the condominium buildings. We have not yet decided which type of surfacing we'll be doing, but will be pours. We'll be utilizing rain gardens to manage runoff from the rooftops and also from some of the paved surfaces. Some of them will be located essentially in front of condominium buildings and the back of them and along the esplanade. The goal here is to provide high, you know, pretty high water quality treatment, but also to cool down the water as the water filters through the soil. Vegetated filter strips will be implemented, basically, at the edge of the esplanade to provide treatment for esplanade itself. And then, vegetated swales will be implemented along all of the roadways. We're proposing a green street section for this project.
I think that's it. And, well, Ed and Randy are going to come up and share with you a little bit how they kind of came up to the vision of what the Cove is, and they have much, much better graphics than we have, so you'll get a better idea of what the buildings are going to look like and how the site will look once we're done.
Randy will be right back after he answers his phone.
No, no, that was his theme music.
I like that one better.
How much time do you think you'll need for your presentation?
We're probably 30 minutes. We can chop that down as...
Well, we typically do 15 minutes for the application. We've done 15. It's up to the commission of the body here if you'd like to allow that further.
I want to hear it all. Yeah, I'd like to hear the presentation.
Okay, great. Then feel, yeah, this is the time, so feel free, I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Good evening, Chairman Powell and members of the Commission. We're delighted to be here once again. I think this is our third time that we've...
Can I get the microphone closer to us?
Certainly. Thank you. I think this is the third time we've been to give the planning commission an update, and I think this is probably our 17th community presentation, although I think we sometimes lose count. But we're happy to be here, it's been a long time, and we've delighted to now have a final plan. Where is our control? It's working on it, okay. One of the things, if we had to say, what is our sort of mission statement, I think it's that, that we believe that development and environmental sensitivity can peacefully coexist. We've done that in a number of our past projects, and what we would like to do is run through briefly some of the past projects and then talk about how they're relevant to the Cove, and then give a little bit more information on some of the design elements of the Cove. One thing that we like to do in all of our projects is create a nice entry statement. We want people to have a good feeling when they drive into their residence. This helps foster pride in the community, and we really like to do great entry statements. We've done a number of projects in the area, several of them in Lake Oswego. Merrillhurst was a 105-lot, single-family subdivision that was the home of the 1994 Street of Dreams. We did a project called Oswego Point in downtown Lake Oswego, and just upstream from that, one called Riverbend, and another called River View. Riverbend is a 32-unit, high-end condominium right on the river, and while it wasn't a former industrial site, it has some of the same characteristics in terms of environmental sensitivity, the Willamette Greenway, the calculation of the 100-year flood elevation, the fact that the parking is in the flood area, and other similarities. Oswego Point is probably most similar to a large project in downtown Lake Oswego on the Willamette River, 48 acres, total of 534 residences, which included 112 condos, 422 apartments, a water sports center, restaurant, offices. We did a lot of things there. Actually, the top, hand me the laser, the top photo here, that's what the project, the site, used to look like when it was the Oregon Portland Cement Factory. It was the largest employer in Lake Oswego, but it was a noisy, polluting industrial use, and we replaced it with a new landmark on the river that included apartments, offices, an amphitheater, restaurant, really created a whole new landmark on the river.
Make a statement or two. One of the things, Ed Darrow, one of the things about that site, you saw all the concrete there, this was done over 20 years ago. When we tore that down, we took and crushed all the concrete, we saved it, set it aside, and used it to surcharge part of the property, and then we incorporated it right back into the roads. We were able to pull out $500,000 of the steel, which we, once again, rolled right back into the value of the project. So, it was a, it was a time when, you know, recycling wasn't even really that big of a program, but we were doing it then, and then we want to do the same thing on the site. We have a lot of concrete that's still existing on this site, and we have the general contractor that'll actually be crushing that, we'll use it on-site.
One of the things that we like to do in our development projects is to repeat certain key design elements. In this case, there's a cupola on top of the primary recreation building, also on top of the secondary recreation building, and on top of the restaurant and some other areas throughout the site. By repeating certain key design elements, we're able to give the development a sense of cohesiveness and a good, a good feeling. This water sports center is something that we developed and it's grown in popularity for rowing. There are now three high schools that have that as their base of operations, and they go all over the place, even up into Canada to row. It's been a very popular activity. A riverfront was a small, eight-unit condominium complex. The architects called it Rubik's Cube because it was a little bit figure, a little bit tough to figure out how it needed to step down the hillside. It stepped down the hillside to, once again, to the Willamette River. It's an interesting design element. That's, this is Riverbend, four buildings there, and then this was this proposed structure. Tidewater Cove is another large mixed-use master plan waterfront community, and as you can see, there are spectacular views. The river at that point is wide enough that it looks like a big lake, and Mount Hood, when it's out, is quite spectacular. This is another little interesting thing that we would like to do, this is an artificial stand for an osprey nest, and it's offshore away, it's far enough that predators can't get up and down the pole there, but people find it real interesting to be able to see that activity. This is a 12-foot-wide concrete pathway. We're proposing a 20-foot-wide along the esplanade, and the reason that we're doing that is because we want, we expect that to be a venue for a variety of different community gatherings, everything from antique car shows to wooden boat festivals to farmers' markets. I mean, there's, the range of things that could go on there is very, very wide, just depending upon what community parks and rec department or whatever wants to, wants to do. The, I'll go to the next slide. The area along, this is on the north shore of the Columbia River, this is what I was looking for, we regraded this whole area and replanted it with appropriate riparian native vegetation. So, many of the things that we'll be doing at the Cove, we've already done before in other projects. We added, this wasn't a requirement, but we added these wetland areas, partially because we felt that these buildings being backed farther from the river would benefit by a water feature that gave them a sense of connection to the water beyond, and this has been a very popular project. There's an entry area here with a rec building, a swimming pool, tennis court, condominium buildings along here, these are two office buildings, this is a pad for a restaurant, and then this area is actually close to being built out now.
Starting over here is a water treatment plant, so we're kind of following water treatment plants.
The exteriors, again, you'll notice different variety of window shapes and sizes that give the building architectural character. It's a handsome building. The interiors are nicely done, designed to maximize the view opportunities in the waterfront settings. And by the way, I might mention that other 224 units of condominiums on this project, 224 of them will have spectacular water views. That's, go ahead.
This is probably our eighth project that we've done on the water, and we like to, you know, bring the kitchen area out to the water, the master bedroom, which is here, it doesn't show the bedroom, but we like to get those three primary areas, the kitchen, the living area, and the master bedroom where they all have a view corridor. The number of units that we could have put on this site, we could have put several more, but to be able to get that kind of a opportunity, you need to use like a 32 to up to 42-foot-wide unit. In this case, we're at anywhere from 28 up to 32 to 40, so it gives a real opportunity for view corridors.
Another large mixed-use master plan riverfront community at south shore at Newport, 100 acres, half a mile of nice sandy oceanfront property, and we did a variety of housing types there. We did seven single-family lots, about 60 condominium units in small buildings, four to six units per building, and then 100 little cottages in the back that don't actually have water view but are within walking distance. And a couple of interesting things here, this is sort of the early version of the neo-traditional type community. This little cottage, for example, is shingle siding, weathers to a nice gray-white trim. It's got the front porch, the picket fence, little arbors, it's a very romantic, little charming kind of cottage, and this project has been, gotten recognition as being one of the best, if not the best, from San Francisco all the way up to Washington State. One of the interesting things here, this, there's two wetland areas totaling about 30 acres. We could have gone in for a permit to... We could have gone in for a permit to fill those areas and mitigate, but we chose to leave them there, and even beyond that, we did, again, we did some things that weren't really required. We talked to our wetland biologists and botanists and said, what can we plant there that would actually add to the population support capability of this little ecosystem? And so we did that. We had a five-year monitoring program, and it worked out to be really a pretty neat deal. The interesting thing, too, is that when you tell people about that, you know, they should stay out of the wetland, or they shouldn't cross the dune except at designated areas, sometimes people kind of resist if you tell them what to do or what not to do. But if you do a little stewardship and you get them to understand the reasons behind that, then all of a sudden they become an advocate, and when their friends come to visit, they say, no, I can't actually walk out there, but if you look carefully, you'll see there's a blue heron over there. So that's been a fun process to try to figure out how to get people excited about resource preservation, and we think there's room to do that at the Cove as well. So here we are at the Cove. We had 109 acres. That was actually counting another parcel. But as I say, we're proposing 224 condominiums, 75 to 80,000 square feet of medical office, 58,400 square feet of traditional office with a couple of restaurants on either side, and a variety of recreational opportunities and public benefits. In fact, I think, right here, we're gonna skip right through because everybody knows where this is, and Tony did a great job, and Michael, talking about where the site is, so we'll skip past those slides. The project has about 72% open space, which is pretty incredible. A typical mixed-use project would have maybe 20% of open space. So this is a lot, lot, lot of open space and a lot of activities that can and will go on here. This is a little summary of the activities. Starting up here, this is the mix, called the mixed-use office building. It's got office and restaurants on either side. The sheriff would be relocated at this spot. This is sheriff's marine patrol office, which is presently about here, will be going over here. That gives him better access, shorter response time in emergencies, and he was, the people there were excited about that opportunity. This area, we talked about as a nature preserve, and one of the things we want to do is have this area be open only to canoes and kayaks, human-powered craft, and for the rest of the Cove, we expect boats to be in there, but we'd like to have it be a no-wake, five-knot maximum area. The medical office building is at this location, our recreation building, which will actually be available to the folks in the medical office as well as the condominiums. So that'll be a nice amenity, and it does look out over the water. The 224 condominium buildings or units will be in six buildings across this area, and the potential for marina here, maybe some excursion craft, a water sports center over here, and a kayak and canoe launching area, which will be a nice amenity particularly for the kids. What we're calling the North Park, and the community can rename that if they like, an amphitheater for summer concerts, gazebo, changing room, or exer, excuse me, restrooms, and another venue for a variety of activities. Some kind of lifestyle shots in terms of things that could go on there. This one is a summer concert. This was at Oswego Point. These concerts became so popular that the city decided to move the venue to a different and larger park downstream a little ways. But you can see here, there's boaters that come listen, you know, tie up and listen, and this is one of the excursion boats, and this facility sat about 400 people, and it was very, very popular, as I say.
One of the things, when Randy had talked about the two projects which are just south of this project, one is the Riverbend, and the other was River View, we were actually invited by the city to come and develop those properties. They actually contacted us and said, we would like to develop the next contiguous properties. We'd like you to develop the pathway to the same kind of public benefits that you did on the other projects. So we actually joint ventured one of those projects with the city. They actually contributed up to a million dollars just on buying land, and then invited us to come in and develop it. So it was, I think that this project kind of set the basis for our approach to doing projects, so the city was very complimentary in inviting us in to do other ones.
These two activities were at Oswego Point. This is the water sports center. And I think I forgot to mention that we walked to the site once with Senator Hatfield, and he said, you know, this is an excellent example of how public-private cooperative efforts ought to work. They ought to end up with things like this. And what, part of what makes it popular is it's a range of activities. It's, sometimes it's hard to convey, but we, our vision for this project is that it be a fun, lively, active, exciting place with a whole bunch of different activities going on, not only in terms of people dining in the waterfront restaurants, but the water sports center could host a Cub Scout troop, what do they call them, sea scouts, or mariners, which is the young lady version of that. And we can imagine people out there rowing races and learning how to sail small dinghies, and just a whole variety of activities going on that make it a fun, exciting place. More of the lifestyle shots. It's kind of a bird's eye view of looking down at all the different activities, different uses that would go on. As you come into the project, it would be like a waterfall over here in this water feature, which is, which is north of the Oregon City Shopping Center.
This would be your entry point right here on the site plan. So this is looking this way. So right over here is the water feature. Back over here is McLaughlin. So you're driving into the project. The first thing you see will be this water feature, which will actually be a very nice water feature in itself, and gives you connectivity to the water as you drive around and go back. Two restaurants on each side of that building that just disappeared.
Okay, here you go. Where'd it go? Your wrist isn't working. Okay.
I'll have to do it manually.
That's okay. We'll go for it. So this is looking from the north end of the esplanade, south past the northerlymost condominium building.
This would be right over here on the site plan, so you're looking this way.
And I think one of the things in terms of revegetating this area, if you were to draw this right now, it'd be very steep coming up here, and a very small amount of vegetated area. The, the plan calls for increasing the vegetated area and the habitat by probably 400%. And when it was mentioned that we're talking about reducing the vegetated corridor setback from 200 feet to 50 feet, actually, if you measure the distance from the ordinary high water to most of these buildings, they're about 150 feet back, and some of them are more than 200 feet back. So there's really only one building that needs that 50-foot requirement, and that's the office building next to McLaughlin there. That gets pretty tight right in that area.
There's only one corner of that building, which is right over on this kind of north-western
This is a view looking at the North Park, the water sports area, water sports center, canoes, kayaks, rowing craft, classes for kids, boating safety, just a fun bunch of different kinds of activities that we would see going on there, that all contribute together to make it really a fun spot. Fun spot to live and fun spot to play. People that can't afford a condominium can still come down there and have a great time doing a variety of different things. This is just showing a range of different kinds of amphitheaters. And to get an idea, we're not here this evening to get your approval on the architecture of the buildings, but I think it's important in terms of the overall development plan to have a sense of what that's, what those buildings are like. This, on arrival, I think as Tony mentioned, there's parking underneath all these buildings. That parking is within the 100-year flood elevation, but that's a permissible activity.
You might think that that would be a negative in terms of a marketing approach, but if you recall the Riverbend project, those units went from 800,000 up to 2.5 million dollars, and they were in the flood plain as far as the parking went, and it was not a marketing issue. So it's such an infrequent thing, and there is usually way more than enough notice, so that if you have a conflict, then you can actually remove your vehicle.
And those architects that you were talking about, Dan, did a great job here. There's a range of different kinds of sizes of windows, of eyebrow-type design features, and they really are pretty neat buildings. Eyebrow, again, at the, at the entrance. One of the kind of fun elements was when you come up to the entrance, there's a little porcupine share, covered area here. And on this side, a stoneworks that's also kind of a waterfall that'll create a pleasant sound and help mask the sound of 205. Here again, you can see the eyebrow. And backing up a little bit, this is, we think is kind of the heartbeat of the community. It's the plaza part of the esplanade between building three and four in the condominium row, and this will be the first, the first condos that we want to do, because this will help kick it off. This will help be part of the excitement that makes people want to be in this spot. And, you know, it's connected with the marina, again, a possible excursion boat, depending upon if that works out or not. But this will be an area just kind of full of aliveness and excitement. Closer look, there's a water feature that goes down the middle of it, a nice little bridge over here, two restaurants, outside dining, looking out at the, at the Cove, really a kind of a fun, exciting spot. This is the recreation building, and you can see that it repeats with the eyebrows some of the design themes to give the project that sense of continuity that we talked about.
Yes, it goes way beyond just being the rec building because it's a very substantial size, the opportunity to have a lounge area, to be a community center where the people can get together, not just to work out in a portion of the building, but to actually use it for, you know, community services or community things that they want to do.
And this is part of a new, another new little park area that's all interconnected by the esplanade and the trail systems throughout the project. And again, sort of a bird's eye view from above. The medical office building, 80,000 square feet, and that's really just a design concept. That's not necessarily what the building will look like, but we wanted to illustrate how with similar materials, we could, and, you know, similar stone on the front, we could tie it in so it'd be a compatible architectural style with the rest of the project. This is the intersection of Main and Agnes, a new roundabout here. It's the medical office building, the recreation building, and the condominium building, and in the distance, the office building with a couple of restaurants. This is another elevation of the medical building. And then the phasing. I think both Tony and Michael talked about phasing, so we can probably zip through this pretty quickly.
It is important, though, to understand that the phasing, phase one and phase two really is going to create the basic park system. So this area is being graded out here. We're grading here for the future medical building. The whole esplanade goes in as a finished item. All of this front riparian area gets done. The dirt gets rolled back and creates the paths for these condominium buildings. The North Park becomes completed. So when you come onto this property at this point in time, when phase one and two are done, you can walk the whole path system. It'll be totally planted. You'll have the North Park. You'll have an opportunity to use that. It has the ability to have the amphitheater there. The road system will be half-done for emergency ingress and egress for this phase of the medical building, when that would be actually built vertically. And then as the market, in fact, improves, this, these condo buildings, which are the six buildings, the center area here, will be buildings three and four. That would be kicked off with the plaza. So the project is totally ready to go, and it's a full park system after phase one and two. Phase three is the medical office building, which would be going vertical. That's suggesting that we've got all the infrastructure in, and now that can be built up as a building. And so that you understand the areas, once again, this, this is all being graded out. The arrow's pointing to it, the North Park. This is actually being graded out and done, and actually being built in phase three, and this is actually being, the dirt being moved here, subject to that dirt being of a quality. We have some issues with that quality of that dirt. So in effect, when you look at the 3D program here, you've got the medical building going vertical. You have the esplanade all being built, the whole park system. You have the North Park. You have no condominium buildings. And you have, this area over here, the peninsula is going to be a progressive effort. Because of the hydrology of the river that's there, we don't want to go in and rip that out and say, all right, we're going to put in little teeny plants. We want to, in fact, do that progressively. So that'll be done over a period of time. So this whole area will, in fact, be just a major park, ready to go when the condominiums are available for marketing. Once again, another, just another view looking up so that you can see what it would look like. There was a question that was asked, well, you know, you're talking about doing this progressively, but what is it going to look like? So we have this model done so that you can see that the esplanade is in, a portion of the major plaza, the north area here, I mean, the south area for the medical building. The whole road system is in. Half of this road is in for emergency ingress and egress. This is actually not in. I'm not sure why that's in of that picture, the, the water sports center. That comes And just making a progression so you get a little better shot as you're going down the pathway. And this is starting out at this area right here, the entry, kind of making a progression and kind of quick down that. The nice thing about not putting anything in this area, you could have pulled the road back further and built additional condos along here. We wanted the people to have a sense of feeling the water when they came into the project, not just come in and feel a wall of buildings with the medical building here and buildings on the other side. So we did not, we actually had designs where those were in there. We said, let's take those out. We want to touch the water. We want to feel it when you come into the project. You've seen this before. This is the medical building. This is coming to the turning point, the Agnes and the Main Street. The nice turnaround here, there'd be additional signage here, and then going on down with the pads built out. And this is looking from the north end, looking south here again. This is the amphitheater looking up the pathway. And additional pathway. Moving on down towards the center here, towards the plaza, and a portion of the plaza will be in. Once the two condo buildings, which are the first phase, buildings four, and then buildings three and four, and that water feature comes in and comes down into this area and creates that major plaza. So this is, when building four, phase four comes in, it's building three and four going vertical with the two condos. Those are 80 units. These condominiums average almost 1,800 square feet. Average price around $530,000, subject to timing and coming out of the ground when they do come out. So you have two buildings going up in phase four. You already have this completed, and you have the infrastructure. So visually seeing, you've got two buildings. You've got this hyper-seated out and planted, the whole area planted here, and then progressing to the next two buil, well, this is going in, seeing the plaza. Tighter shot here. So we've created the activity. One of the things that a lot of guys in our business do, they say, well, should you take and do the lesser product first, or do the highest-end product first? We always like to take and create the best part of the project first, to create the enthusiasm, to set the project off. So this is actually some of the best product in the fact that you're going to be right here in the plaza area. You can walk down and go into one of these little areas for coffee or a little lunch. Rec building will go in. At the outset of the project, this will be used as a marketing function. It has a total view out here. You can actually take the people and walk over and show them the condos. So this will be a sales function and also work as a rec building Same building with a floating car. Same building with a floating car. Phase five is coming down here and doing two additional buildings. It's a forty-unit building and a thirty-two-unit building for a total of seventy-two units.
Slowing down.
And everybody's wearing out, including the camera. Two buildings, additional, get in. So we've got a total of four buildings. And then the next phase is adding the last two buildings. This is showing those two new buildings going in with these two paths still waiting for And then the last phase, phase six of the residential, those buildings going vertical, it's an additional seventy-two units. Subject to market conditions, it might be necessary to split those into phases. And I think that one of the things in talking about the timeframe of the ten years, condominiums are a function of what the market is. So if we would have to take a phase and do one building, that would actually happen unless we've asked that in our request of the permit. These are the last two buildings here. Our preference, obviously, is to build them sooner than later.
The rest of this may be a little riper.
Yeah, I think this is just the overview, everything being completed. I think it goes into the mixed-use building.
Yeah, for some reason, it's getting very tired.
Another just overview, mixed-use building is here. That's the fifty-eight thousand four hundred square feet. Well, we can kind of wrap it up here if it's not going to work.
Are we back in business?
So this has a restaurant on this end, a restaurant on this end, and the balance of it is for office space. On the back, there's the opportunity for the owner of this building to put access for the restaurants to come up and come into the building. And over here is the sheriff relocation. The marina is really going to be, it's not a profit center for us. It's actually going to be built on a request basis so that if we could get, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, whatever, we would build it. And we'd probably build an additional ten or so just for general marketing. So this would be available for condominium. If those people did not want it, we'd build it for the general public. This is an overview. Once again, I think there's three more slides here and it kind of wraps it up. Looking out through the plaza. Randy wants to go home.
That's all, folks?
Wait, there's one more.
Oh.
It's the theme. And we like to say that we've changed the environment. We've made it better. So we open it up for questions.
Great. Any questions at this point? I do have a couple of questions if I could. Since you've shown us some of your other projects, I wanted to kind of address some questions to those projects. Some of the key elements of this are, we're talking about grading in a floodplain. We're talking about slope. And my question is, I guess, what experience have you had now that you've got these other projects in? What experience have you had in building on steep slopes? And are you seeing from this last storm, are you seeing any negative impact from that?
Well, you know, we did bring up the fact that we built the Merrill Hears property. There was a major landslide on a property which we did not do, which was above us. We had the opportunity to buy that property. Over the years, I have looked at many sloped projects and I've always walked away from them because I think that you're basically liable in perpetuity for them and they are just not easy to figure out. Even with the best geologists, and you look at the bedding planes, you look how they're sloping, we did a couple of them in California even. They were just amazing, where we had to totally change the grading of the dirt. And I've never been comfortable since that one project, which was done thirty-five years ago, I said, I'm not going to do any more of those because they're just absolutely, you really don't know. I mean, I don't care, you bring in the best geologist, you tie everything back in. So we don't, we just don't do that. The projects that you've seen there, Riverbend, the other one which is on the hillside, those were all very stable-type slopes, not super, super-high grades. All the ones which we have done, with the exception of the first one many years ago, we just really don't do it. So it's a hazard that, you know, a lot of people will say that you can, you know, mitigate it, fix it. It's not something that we care to do. We don't have that in this case.
And the same question, I guess, about the riverfront grading, where you're changing the slope there. I mean, have you had experience? It looked like maybe perhaps on the Columbia project, you did some of that. And I'm wondering what your experience was with that?
Well, Randy, you might talk to that.
Yeah, that was a good example of taking a moderate slope, cutting it back to even a more moderate, lower degree, whoops, and revegetating it. And we put down a kind of a coconut mat for erosion control and then potted little holes in that and did all the plantings. And came back, replanted the plants that didn't survive, and it worked out very well. There haven't been any big blowouts or anything there. It's worked fine. And I think part of the key is getting the angle at the right, getting the slope at the right angle. And in the case of this project, we're creating a three-to-one slope. Usually, two-to-one is considered to be stable. Three-to-one is way more stable because it's a much more gentle slope.
And there isn't, we don't have a, from our understanding of the geology there, we don't have any unique bedding planes that create slippage or some opportunities for things moving out. It's, three-to-one is a very, very nice slope, so we're not really concerned with that. The main thing that we were concerned with was the peninsula and going in and doing all the repairing work there as one big, you know, swash. If you have the amount of water moving through an area, which you do like that area, you don't want to go in and just clean it out and say, all right, now we've got some nice new plants here. So we want to do that progressively.
This is the project we were just talking about, Tidewater Cove. And you can walk down that slope. It's gentle enough that you can walk down it.
The other thing is this twelve-foot wide, that actually gets crowded. When we talked about doing the twenty, the twenty is not so much of an absolute trail. It's really a venue, as Randy was saying, for having, you know, different kinds of programs there, farmers' markets, the antique boat show, things of that nature. So you can actually use it for running things up and down and bringing people into the project.
Okay. Two more questions and I'll move on. But this next question relates to replanting in an environment like that and with high water and as we get with these storms. Have you found in any of your projects where you've had to go in or where you have gone in and replanted or put in new plants? Are you finding that you're losing a lot of that over time because of high water or damage at all? Or what kind of experience are you finding there?
Well, at Oswego Point, there was, you know, flooding not up to the units. Part of that was, it took additional planting. What we're doing with Tuftal in this case, which is the landscape architect, we are doing a contract with them for two years of maintenance. So we want to make sure that that's there. And we're actually just asking them to expand that up to four years. So we want to make sure that those materials can handle it. The one thing that's nice about this area, once again, you don't get that hydrology. You don't get the movement of water. You get the water going up and going down, so you don't have this force that's going to take and deteriorate it. So we feel pretty comfortable that we're going to be fine with the plantings.
Okay. And then the last question, there's a lot of discussion going around, and I've been reading articles, about nocturnal creatures and animals. This area has been pretty dark at night. And you're looking at putting quite a few, from the lighting design I've seen here, quite a few lights around the cove, certainly not on the peninsula, at least from what your lighting deal shows. I'm wondering, in your experience, again, from any of your other projects, have you found the lighting has been a problem? Or you want to build these creatures to come into the area? I mean, that's what you're doing it for. Do you find that these lights are pushing in the way, especially the nocturnal animals?
We haven't had that experience.
No, we don't have any information in that direction. I was out walking my dog a few days ago along the Willamette at Oswego Point in Lake Oswego and noticed a lot of beaver activity chewing, and, you know, we've seen nutria around there and, oh, things even up as big as the sea lions. But, I mean, there's everything in that river. But we haven't noticed any problem.
Is that area lit?
Yes. Yeah. The trail is lit and there's lights that go out to the water sports center that's up above.
And the type of lighting you're using there, some along like what you'd use here?
Well, yes and no. That, the lighting that was originally installed there was before people had much of an awareness of the dark sky idea. So there were some special baffles that were added later to reduce the glare because those lights just went everywhere. But they still, you know, as far as we know, which, I mean...
I think it's a good question, though, and that maybe there might be an opportunity to change the amount of light as you progress through the night. You know, maybe at ten-thirty or eleven o'clock, those lights, every other one shuts down or something. Because it would be nice to not have so much light, even though these are, you know, lights that are, you know, shining down, it still impacts the area.
Oh, sure. Well, and especially in that area where we're coming into a very diverse area and changing the entire look of it. And I think that's just something to look at, and I'm sure you probably have or will if you haven't already. But I think it's important that it's something we bring up because I feel, like I said, more and more, the more I read about development in areas like that, the lighting is becoming the biggest problem in some cases. So I just wanted to bring that forward and ask the question.
You guys are taking notes back here.
Okay, that's it with my questions for now. Any others?
Yeah, I've got some questions. And it sounds like when, after we get a report from staff, we'll be able to get down to some other things. So I just want to kind of hit some high points, the more important things. Are there provisions for where just general public would park? This is a, this entire area will be accessible to the public, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So where do they park? I didn't see anything along the way there for.
Well, there are little cutouts on this road here. This road, which will be Agnes, allows parking, does it not, gentlemen?
No, but there is parking right down there.
Right here at this park.
At the actual park. And then there is the on-street parking.
Over here. We had talked with Tri-Cities about, they have ten point eight-three acres here, and part of the process in working with the city was that we did have another condominium building actually sitting right over here, and Tri-Cities asked us not to do that. So we backed that out of the project and we had talked about doing, and this is still on the city's side, it has to be accomplished, but for not utilizing this for an economic opportunity and a tax base, that this actually be a reciprocal trade to where this would be open space and this would be open space, but the potential of maybe even doing some parking there. So that is an opportunity, which hasn't been followed through.
Okay. Yeah, because if the idea is to activate this area with both the residents and everybody else, it seems to me, I mean, ideally it'd be great if people could walk here, take their bike here, take public transit. Yes, okay, got it. But also people will probably park and get a stroller out and those kinds of things. So I think it's a pretty important part. A really, really big kind of question, and I think, I think staff maybe might want to jump in on this one as well. I guess one of the things that struck me when we first heard that this was happening here, for me, was just the simple proximity of this site to an old dump. It's less than fifteen hundred feet away. And I guess, I'm just wondering, maybe I start with staff. Is there any requirements? We are now intending to activate this area much more than what it is. We're inviting people to go down to the water and be, you know, participate in that. And so as such, it seems to me that we should really understand if there's any issue with where the dump is and any plumes that may have happened below ground on, I mean, that's all toxic stuff. So what happens there under the groundwater and how does it relate to this cove? Is there anything in the cove itself that is contaminated? Are there any sort of reports on this that we can? I think it'd be in everybody's best interest that we just understand what it is, and maybe it's really simple, but maybe it's not.
Yeah, Randy, what did Stu Allright, was our environmental geologist there, and what was his statement? We had him actually do the resource into the water, do all, any contaminants that are on the site. And what was his statement about allowing his?
Well, I, to sort of put it in perspective, I asked him, I said, is this clean enough that you'd let your daughters swim here during the summer? And he said, yes. So to me, that's like an indication of, from a, you know, from a professional, to me, it sort of puts it into context in terms of, you know, the scale of the problem. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, you know, it's, you know, the fact that, you know, I think the other variable for me is, you know, we're just witnessed another flood that came up and, you know, we saw a hundred-year flood and what it did. But, you know, when you just change the groundwater, just purely anywhere, change the groundwater so dramatically, that's one thing to what it does to this water. But when it also impacts an old dump, I just, I feel really, quite frankly, uncomfortable not knowing that that water is been tested and we see some data, you know, a year-long data sort of chart, you know, not, what is it like when it's low water? What's it like when it's high water? What's kind of happening there? I mean...
Well, supposedly, the water, and Jerry Herman, I think, told us this, that actually the water changes every seven days. Is that correct, Jerry? Did you state that?
Yes, that's a natural cycle.
I'm sorry, hold on, hold on. We need to keep things on the record, please.
Well, we'll get Jerry's comments, I'm sure.
Jerry comes up, he can comment.
Thank you. I suspect.
Well, one thing...
Chetrick, if you can come up to a mic too, so we can get you on.
One thing, if you guys are aware, is that Tri-Cities is actually in the process of capping this site. And DQ recommends all this being isolated. And when we do our project, we're going to go cap it and they're capping it. So there's not going to be introduction of the surface runoff into the groundwater. And DQ wants this to see happen.
What do you mean? What's cap it mean?
They're going to go put impermeable layer on top of the existing dump out there. They're going to provide a surface drainage to drain to our project. We're going to go pick it up in our swales and convey it away. So we're actually stopping water coming into the garbage and creating a leachy problem.
Commissioner Lejois, that tends to be the, that's happened on Rossman landfill on the other side of 205. What they did there is they went in and they capped it. The objective there is to not let any water leach through the site and into the garbage that's below it. So all that water, like if you go out to the driving range, that's actually a synthetic mat down there that picks all that stormwater off, gets picked up and taken off the site, avoiding leaching through the dump down into the groundwater into Abernethy over to the cove. As they were talking about, Tri-Cities is also in the process of removing fill and then removing garbage and capping it in proximity to this site. And then the city has also gone in and done some remediation on the site where materials have been found. But as for exact reports, I don't have one.
Will those eventually be produced?
No, not at this point, no.
I think normal, good practice is to capture the water and let it percolate back into the ground to recharge the aquifer. In this situation, you kind of have the opposite thing where you want to catch the water and control it and the rainwater, the good quality water, so that you're not letting good water go down and mix with bad water. You want to keep it separated with the, that's what the cap is for, and then channel it in an appropriate fashion and not add to the groundwater problem.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's it for now. We'll have some more things.
I'm sure.
At the next meeting, we can ask Nancy Crushaw to be here. She's done a lot of work on the site as well as due diligence on the site. And she would be able to talk about the existing conditions and what's been found under when they did their due diligence on what was being purchased. And would hopefully be able to answer some of your questions.
Yeah, that'd be great. That probably clears up. Thanks.
Commissioner Groner.
I guess, following up on that, just the fact that...
I guess following up on that, just the fact that we've got the concern and you're going to cap it leads me to believe, you know, there is a concern there. So, you know, what is the monitoring and testing that's in place? Just to follow that up, I'd like to know about that. But my questions were more around sort of the, the community access to the area, specifically the, the recreation building. I mean, it's always been, although not necessarily developed, but an area where we as a community have been able to access and utilize, you know, as a, as a community resource. You know, we're now putting private development there with, with some level of community access. But can you talk to, tell me about, you know, the opportunities for community access other than just the community building? You know, what will be the limitations with that being a private residential facility as well?
Well, I, I think when we've done these kind of projects, there hasn't been one where we've tried to, to capture it and keep it independent for just the residents. And I think that's one of the positive things of all the projects. The one on the ocean, same thing, the one on the Columbia and then Lake Oswego. We always like to invite the public in. We're not trying to privatize this and make it a unique community. In this case, with the esplanade, that's totally open. Water Sports Center is dedicated to third parties. I mean, it's really for the community. When Randy was talking about the one in Lake Oswego, you got three major high schools participating in that program. That's not, that's not the people in the condominiums, that's not the people in the apartments as much as it is the general community. So the intent is to make it a very, very public area. When you invite people to come into a, an amphitheater, that really is opening it up to the public. And that's one of the things that we did in the other project, Lake Oswego, a very complimentary type of product, is it really, I mean, on Wednesday nights in the summertime, absolutely packed and bringing people in buses from other areas to actually come into the project. So they were having to park them offsite. There was so much activity. So that's totally open. This trail system is connecting into your existing trail system. It goes up here, connects into the existing trail system. So you've got the opportunity to run, walk, or whatever, enjoy this area. And then in terms of weekend activity, we see this as a real opportunity to do a Saturday market, to do boat shows, to do things that really are inviting the community into the project. So the only thing that, that, you know, you take this area here, it is still owned, and I think that was Doug Neely's desire, at one time we were talking about owning that. Our main thing is to make sure that it's maintained correctly. We want to make sure that it's a very high-quality maintenance. It doesn't go into, you know, the back shop and get done not quite right. We want to do it to the, the very highest level. So that's, that's important to us, to make sure that landscaping is kept. So I think that really, I can't see anywhere where we're closing it off to the public. It is a very unique resource.
Well, the other public, points of public access would be the, the restaurants. And that creates a new opportunity for people to sit, dine on the river, watch the activities, watch the birds, participate more than, than they've had an opportunity to do so in the past. This area would have, as we've currently envisioned it, interpretive signs that would talk about the, the natural resource, what kinds of animals are living there and, you know, encourage people to stay on the path and not wander around. So there's just, the canoes and kayaks, which haven't been there before in terms of a stand, a place you can lock it up, a whole lot easier access to your canoe or your kayak when you can just put it up on a, on a shelf that's on a float rather than having to haul it between your car and your act. So this really, I mean, that's, that's what we think is one of the great benefits of this program is it has a huge amount of public access.
And so the North Park, the Peninsular, is this all still public-owned and operated?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Could, if you don't mind, could you clarify a little bit about public and private ownership and responsibility? I think that was brought up by Parks and Recs as well. Yeah, what properties are controlled by who and who's responsible?
They don't, total shit on this one. Do we have, oh, you got that other drawing?
The walkway is...
There are three, let me open my book here and I can... So you have three condo lots, which ultimately would be purchased by a specific property. All the property, with the exception of this piece right here, which will be 9.27 acres, which would be the medical office, and then additional 3.55 acres right here, which would be a future rec building and public park. Those are owned independently now. We have those under contract and we'll be purchasing those. And a portion of them, this, which is not going into production directly, will actually be bought by the city. So the city will control this, all of this, all of this. And then as we go into building these out, we do a fair reuse appraisal and we purchase those from the city. We currently have invested a combination of incentive and, and dollars, almost to $6 million. So ultimately, we would be getting a credit for a portion of that as we move through building out the units as to this fair reuse value. So the city will in fact own everything but this and will own this, all of this. And as we go into building out after phase one and two, going vertical with the product, then we'll actually be buying these from the city. Does that answer your question? Okay.
It's almost all city-owned.
Any other questions for?
Sure, Paul, yeah. I'd, I'd like to follow up on a, on an issue that you'd raised and has to do with, with the dirt that gets moved on the project. In, in terms of scope or scale, is, is this balanced cut-and-fill project a large project? The biggest you've done? Smallest you've done? Have you done anything else like this?
In terms of moving dirt, it's probably the largest that we've done. That's one of the reasons why we brought the best guys that we know to, to actually do the coordination. This project, as Randy had mentioned earlier, has had 18, you know, reviews and been out to the general public and I think we've probably done 10 iterations. And those iterations were strictly on moving the dirt and making it work and making it work for different product. At one time, we had townhouses over here and what was happening on the townhouses because of the need to actually keep part of their parking in a garage below the units because of the floodplain, the price became so high that they weren't marketable. So we said, "We cannot build those." So we changed that, redid the grading, moved the dirt around again. We've had probably four different iterations on this property and went to a commercial use, which we think is a very positive contribution of the project. Part of this dirt over here is not acceptable, so we're looking at, you know, importing and we've taken this down to create this bowl, which is a natural setting for the amphitheater. So that dirt is being moved over here. When you saw the drawing that showed the section on the buildings and the way the pathway and then the way it was going to three to one, well, when you do that three to one, the dirt that is up above that three to one new cut is being rolled over and brought back into the project for use of going vertical. So it's been, I really compliment the engineers because this, it has not been an, an easy deal. There's probably a half a million dollars in engineering alone just to figure out the dirt. So it's a very, it's a very unique site and it's not an easy one. But tenacity and saying we can do it, we just kept, kept running at it, so.
And for the other part of your question, this is not one of the larger projects in terms of number of units. 224 units here. Oswego Point was 536, more than twice as much.
Right, I was more concerned about the amount of earth that had to be moved. And then what would be the maintenance plan for assuring that there's boat access across the gravel bar that kind of builds up during the summertime to, between the river channel and the cove area? What will be the mitigation or what's the plan for dealing with that?
The city and the county have agreed to process an application for that. They've had engineers submit the application, or they submitted it recently for comment to agencies, and I think it's now going back in for permit. And there's a in-water calendar. I'm not sure exactly what, you know what the in-water calendar is?
It depends. I think it's June, maybe September.
The hope is that this during summer, sometime in summer of '09, they will do that dredging work to open that up. And, you know, the, the primary reason for that is the, the sheriff's marine patrol needs to be able to quickly get to a response. And when that gravel bar, sand and gravel bar gets too high, then it makes it very difficult or sometimes impossible for the sheriff to get, to get on his boat and get out to a rescue. If he has to take his boat from the back on a, on a trailer from a truck and launch it somewhere, it adds, you know, 20 minutes to his response time and that might be somebody's life. So the city and the county have both realized the value of that for public safety. Now, obviously it benefits us as well or has the potential to benefit us as well. So we support those activities. And I don't know that there's anything set up yet in terms of, and it might be nice to have a little sinking fund or something where, because you never know, I mean, you can't predict when there's going to be another event that either takes all that gravel away and moves it further downstream or piles it up some more. You've got the Willamette going up and down, the Clackamas going up and down, the tidal factors, and it's, it's just really hard to predict when that's going to happen again.
Well, as to futures, and that's, I think that was your question, who's going to maintain it into the future? I have to leave, that's my phone. The intent would be to have the city and the county maintain it in perpetuity.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, just one other. And, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to create a community that's walkable and have a number of resources available. And the shopping center is over there and of course it's up to them whether they want to attach in a more appropriate way. Is there any provisions here to have a walkway that doesn't involve going all the way around?
You know, there isn't one designed now, but I know that the city and the planning department would like to see a design connectivity, which would actually be a little roadway that would come off here as long as it doesn't impact the design elements of this, this product here. When we did Oswego Point, once again, we did exactly that. We put just a small walking path in. That is, I think that's probably not a bad thought. There is the potential of working back and forth up this little slope right here. We did not actually put that in. It's, unfortunately, you're at the back end of the project here.
Right, it would involve a little work with...
Yeah. And we did get ahold of 3D, it was a 3D group out of San Francisco that owns the property. Talked to them about, originally, we talked about taking these two buildings out here and doing a road through. They said that they would be happy to work with us. Obviously, we're going to have to write a check to, to buy that part of the property. But they, they were very open and I'm sure that they'd be open to that kind of a concept. I think it's, it's actually a very valid idea that actually hasn't been put into our planning, so we'll, we'll look at that very, very strongly.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, this time we'll open up for public testimony and we'll start with those in support of the application. We've got, if you have a, you'd like to speak, make sure you fill out a form, give it to Tony. Three minutes to just, to ask your question or three minutes rather to, to make your statement. If you are speaking for a recognized neighborhood, a city neighborhood association, you get 10 minutes. We will be timing it. The yellow light says you're almost up. The red light means stop. And Commissioner Lejois will follow that through. So we'll start with those in support, then those neither, and then we'll go to those in opposition.
The first, first two for support is Jerry Herman and Don Vedder.
And if you'll please give us your name and city residence.
My name is Jerry Herman. I live in unincorporated Clackamas County in the Redland area. Before I start, I guess I'd be, start being timed. I have a piece of paper here. If I pass this out now, which is my comments, does that mean I can never add to the record again?
No. We will keep the record open and you'll be able to add.
All right, thank you. I know you're going to time me and I'm going to do the best I can, but I have a few points I think are important. First of all, I met these folks three years ago when I was having severe eye problems and I'm still having some eye problems, but I can see and at least enough and read now. And I got to know them well. I'm talking about the principals of this company. I looked at their projects. I took people in this room to their projects to look at Oswego Point, took other facilities, Marine Park and Tidewater Cove in, in Vancouver. And I talked to them extensively about tree preservation and other issues. And I believe we're dealing with a class act. I wish it was possible not to have to remove so much repairing vegetation. My summary sheet talks about 36 years worth of growth, is what is represented in the cove, and in some places 25. We're talking about balanced cut-and-fill. Neat idea. We should give an award in memorial to Jack Parker, who put four, 40-some acres of new capacity into the floodplain of the Clackamas River when he dug out Clackamas Cove. We keep forgetting that we're dealing with a manufactured site there. Forty new acres of capacity, 40 feet deep, exist that were never there before because somebody chose to create a gravel quarry. The history of gravel quarries quite often is that they're thought of as bad things. My belief is most gravel quarries, if there's a design in mind or a concept in mind for their recovery, actually benefit the environment. So I want to point that out. I wish there was a way to not have to take out 700 trees, but it looks like in the case of the balanced cut-and-fill requirements that you want to meet, the repairing corridor will have to suffer. Now, how could it not suffer as much? Living things, when they die, still have life as they decompose. The habitat within the cove with bass croppie, bluegill, otters, beavers, et cetera, is rich. It's probably the richest environment on the Lower Willamette with the only second richest environment, only second better environment, being Ross Island in Portland. If you believe, believe it or not, that is a very rich environment in Portland. This is the second rich, richest environment below Willamette Falls in the lower Willamette River. If we took the logs that have to be taken, the trees, the cottonwoods that must give their lives and some of the other trees, and created some downwoody material along the banks, which hasn't been discussed a lot, but the developers are willing to consider this, take some of them and replant them as standing dead trees, we can make a really interesting statement there that would meet your city sustainability goal, that you're really doing something creative that no one thought about. 700 trees represent about 30,000 tons of carbon, okay? That's 30,000 tons of carbon sequestration, okay? There's a value if we're talking about preserving CO2 emissions or controlling them and storing that downwood and letting it decay naturally and creating habitat along the banks. Your city engineer, Nancy Crushaw, did this when she did the bioengineered swale, which preserved the river, the Clackamas, from cutting into Clackamas Cove 10 years ago. The requirements then of the Division of State Lands and Army Corps of Engineers was to bury those logs in, in lieu of just simply riprapping and arboring the banks of the Clackamas, bury them as a part of the riprap and armor and create some habitat. And it's worked very well. No one's gotten entrapped in them. The wildlife seemed to enjoy it. The beavers, the nutrias, the muskrat, the otters seem to be enjoying it as well. I wanted to point out a couple things that may not have come to your attention. Someone asked about water quality. It takes about seven days for a floating bit of debris to make its way all the way around the cove. The tide, tidal exchange about every two days renews the cove, assuming the tide can get in there. Hence, the gravel bar that we're also concerned about needs to be managed. If the gravel bar could be used, extracted from the river called the Clackamas, it would give you all the fill you need in, in Clackamas Cove to do what you need to. But the agencies won't allow that. So that's why these folks are, are doing such in-depth work, trying to figure out how to make the balanced cut-and-fill work. My point is, without the tidal exchange, forget about water quality, it's going to be a serious problem within the cove. As far as leachate from landfills, the pump station that we've restored and that we do a couple thousand people a year on tours, Sam and I bake lunches and dinners during the summer, that I work with at-risk youth this time of the year, teaching them how to be employable beyond time and to produce work called environmental landscapes, that site basically was polluted because of the leachate plume of Rossman landfill some 25 years ago. When the water comes up, it pollutes the bottom of, it receives and the under part of Rossman's landfill, when the rain comes down, it penetrates through. The result is this dynamic. I wish you'd just take a look at the sheet and hopefully it might guide you in some future thoughts you might have.
We'll do that. Thank you very much.
I could listen to you for hours, though. I could.
Don?
Don Vedder, Oregon City, Oregon. The, the record being open, most of the detail items will come up at the next hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I think I'll, I'll just refrain until I see the detail.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
But I'm in favor of the project.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, I don't have any more comment forums for those in support. Would anybody else like to come up and speak in support? like to come up and speak in support? Moving on to neither, indicated neither, support or oppose, Christine Kaczynski and Kathy Hogan. The letter from Mr. Herman will be entered in the record as Exhibit A. The testimony presented by Ms. Kaczynski will be entered as Exhibit B.
Christine Kaczynski, unincorporated Clackamas County. I'm concerned about several major issues affecting the cove project. The first is regarding the record flooding, which occurs quite frequently due to heavy rainfall. This has been very evident in the past two weeks after receiving record amounts of rainfall, with floodwaters backing up the river and the creeks to the point where Redland Road was closed to through traffic. Residents with horses and livestock in this area had to hurry to move their animals to higher ground. Unfortunately, even then, some of them perished in the cold, flooded, wet conditions. My second concern is for the protection of the salmon-rearing ponds and their habitat. I believe we need more time to have expert consultants, including fish, wildlife, and salmon agencies, to weigh in on this project before going forward. Third concern is regarding sewage overflows, how to prevent them, and how will these affect the environment of the cove? Will the state and Corps of Engineers approve this project, considering the many serious concerns surrounding development of this fragile area? Lastly, this is a terrible area to build medical. One medical building will come in. A couple years later, a second one will be needed, then a third one, then a fourth one. This is a poor area for expansion. I, for one, am not willing to give up the Oregon City Shopping Center to sprawl from a medical facility. The medical facility would be best sited up on the hilltop where there's much more land for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
Kathy Hogan, Clackamas County. I agree with Christine. And I was wondering, for how long will the developer be responsible for the replanting of the plants? When they put them in, I mean, five years down the road, then if they die after that, it sits there and it's not going to do the job that they were put in there for? And are the buyers going to be noticed and required to have flood insurance? Because the best-laid plans of man and body of water and the flooding, and I've been here for 32 years, and that, 96 flood was really a dandy. Cut and fill, the rains giveth and it taketh. So you can cut and fill all you want, but when the rains come and the good Lord says, guess what, you're going to get more than you need, is there any guarantee that this will not flood ever? That the public won't be impacted by the cost of the damage that's done in that area from flooding? And you're talking about the parking. My experience is like, because I live at the edge of the urban growth boundary, that when you put all the new homes that come in from the city and the county, and they know full well, when they come in next to the county property, that there's horses and cows and there's stuff that they aren't, they all of a sudden don't like it and complain. Are they going to complain about the public using that piece of property, the homeowners there, and say they don't want it, and there has to be, there are going to be rules and regulations of when you can and when you can't go and how? And definitely, you need more parking, because if people do go down, they're going to need the parking, because we have no buses that are worth relying on. South End has the bus passed, no, actually, they left the people that came home from Portland that worked there at the transit center with no buses to come up to get on South End Road. So there's not good transportation. People are going to use their cars down there. And my last, really important, is that little yellow spit there. Have you really looked at it and seen how narrow it is? It's so narrow, and it's almost breached. Eventually, it is going to be breached. It's not going to keep, you can't keep that dirt there forever. And it's a big concern, the accessibility of people going up and down the slopes there, and helping the erosion by using it. Are you going to cut and fill and taper it on both sides of the Clackamas and the cove? So that would be a big concern.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
I have one more who indicated neither. Doug Neely?
Doug Neely, Oregon City. What I'm going to put forward is a few suggestions. There are, there's a box covert that goes under Highway 205, and another box covert that goes under the railway tracks. When it's sufficiently dry, I can actually walk through them. And I would recommend that an easement be created so that if the opportunity comes to form a pedestrian bike connection between this area and also the area where the Amtrak station is and the potential rivers is, that that easement be created as part of the process. References were made to dredging the Clackamas River to prevent the tidal flows. It appears that the Corps of Engineers is going to require that the material be deposited either elsewhere in the, in Clackamas River or in the cove area. I think maybe some consideration should be given, and actually, I think Jerry Herman made reference to it, where you could take that material that goes into the cove and put it perhaps, I don't know, along the peninsula or someplace where you could create some shore habitat. If there's interest in actually creating greater wildlife diversity there, there really is no place for shorebirds. And I think if you create such a habitat that would go underwater during the high tide, but be exposed in the low tide, there might be some benefit to that. The other thing I was going to mention is that in that area that was indicated where there might be kayaks and so forth, near the, yes, right in that area that's being pointed to, there are currently metal structures that are sticking out of the water that were associated with the operation that was there many, many years ago. I noticed that in the morning, it's often per, and I assume they're overnight, but oftentimes purchasing, perching on those are several condors, no, the cormorants.
Condors.
The cormorants.
That is impressive.
And I think the intent is to actually remove those metal structures. And if something could be placed there that, you know, keeps those there, that'd be nice. I think several of you know that there in fact is, and has been since I've been here, nesting pairs of osprey have nested on a banded utility line. My understanding is the utility line that's there may well go underground, maybe worthwhile preserving some of those poles and creating nesting habitats elsewhere to keep those birds around. Those are some suggestions I'm putting forward.
Thanks, Doug.
I don't have anyone else who wishes to speak as a neither. Anybody else like to come up?
Oh, I checked neither. I didn't check, Randy.
Either, either, neither, neither.
Those wish to speak and oppose, Ms. Keigho and Mr. Edgar. It's right there. The button's on the bottom.
Camma Keigho, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County, off of Redland Road. Luba states that a city can retain a second opinion or an expert for soil scientist or to review a water overlay district, which I think the city should do in this case. As far as I know from what I looked at, I believe the applicant was the one who hired the expert, and the city's going off of that recommendation, and they haven't hired their own expert. And I think that the city should do that, because I think the Planning Commission brought up some very good questions regarding soil, regarding flooding issues, and also contaminants. And I think that a second opinion is in order. Another concern of mine is the sewage. At this most recent flood in 2009, I noticed that the Clackamet Park was closed off due to sewage overspill. And as the applicant stated, that there's not much movement in this cove area, which means you have a sewage spill in an area like this, it's going to be contaminated, and who knows for how long. That's something that also probably needs to be disclosed to every buyer who plans to buy a condo or residence in this area. That needs to be disclosed, that there could be a potential sewage spill. Another concern of mine is the fact of the urban renewal district. The applicant states that it's up to market conditions on whether or not residences are built or condos. That area is paid off by the city when they take out an urban renewal bond, and they can't pay it off without tax increment, with tax increment, taxes going up in that area. If you don't have new residents or new development going on, how is the city going to pay that bond off? That's a question of mine. Another thing is the rock bar, that that was an excellent suggestion by Jerry and also Doug Neely. And I'm ecstatic that the Army Corps of Engineers would possibly allow that that rock bar be deposited elsewhere, because I would really like to see the vegetation along this cove area where the esplanade is supposed to be. I would like to see that retained. There's a lot of trees there. I think Jerry said there was about, what was it, 500 trees? 700 trees? To see that rock bar moved to fill this area up and retain this vegetation. I think that's an excellent idea. And the other thing is, the applicant also stated that there'd be two-year maintenance on vegetation. Well, this is a 100-year floodplain. It's not a 100-year foliage maintenance plan that the applicant has. They said two-year. 100-year floodplain, I think you can do the math. That means that essentially, this area is supposed to flood, has a 10% chance a year of flooding, which means that you have a two-year maintenance agreement, you know, you're going to be way beyond that if something were to happen. And who's going to be responsible for maintaining that area? As far as I can see, Parks and Rec has a hard time right now taking care of what they have. What is the plan of taking care of more property?
Thank you.
This will be entered as Exhibit C.
Thank you. I'm Paul Edgar. I happen to be the Land Use Chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. Why the rush to move ahead with a Planning Commission approval of the cove plan when there's no market for high-end condos? There's no money to fund or build out or to maintain what would become city-owned property or city parks? I recently was at one of the meetings, kind of the retreat this recently, and one of the issues that came up at the retreat was that the parks, Scott Archer, said, "We don't have enough money to maintain any of the parks, really. We have major shortfalls." Well, here we are, we're adding a whole bunch of parkland and no money. Now, I do believe that there is a possibility that a LID could be put into effect that said that all of this development and all of the properties associated with this become responsible for all maintenance dollars associated with it. I think this is a quality developer. I really do. I think that they have some good ideas, but I believe that a lot of what's happening is very premature, and there are far too many contingencies. This effort to build out housing where we need really jobs, also at the retreat, Joe Cartwright, an economist, said that one of the most critical aspects around this area, I caught him after his major presentation, was jobs and the inability to create jobs. And we will have, right now, 80% of all the new housing going into the Oregon City area is being bought up, and people are commuting 20 miles one way to work. This is clogging our roads. This is exactly the opposite of what should be happening. We should be focusing really on jobs, and what we have here is something where we're creating more congestion, more problems associated with that. We have no idea, in reality, what the dredging impacts might be, and those are just straight outright contingencies. Fish and game, salmon. We know that the cove itself is very delicate. We know at one time, there was even a flushing channel that was put in up above to try to bring water in, and they got nervous with it and closed it off. But maybe something more creative. All it means, and what I come out and say, is, yeah, maybe we've got far too many contingencies, and we need more time to address and really think out the delicate nature of this environment where this proposal is supposed to be happening. Is this the best use of the cove lands? Maybe, I like a lot of it. I think that the developer's very good. But at the same time, I still believe that the shopping center where the medical complex, we should be really looking at not doing, as an example, the river shopping center and really taking this whole area contiguous with the Agnes and the Main Street through there, and really making that area into a shopping center over all of it. And I think we have not yet come to the understanding. We have $10 million of potential UR district money being proposed, and one thing, it came out of the last election. We had two city commissioners saying that they were 100% in support of doing these things, and 100% in support of the annexations, and they both got soundly defeated. We know that the city and the voters, right now, are not in support of using this money and doing these types of efforts. That was very clear at this past election. And so when we start looking at plans like this and moving ahead against what, in fact, the people say and what they want, we're taking some real jeopardious moves. And we know, they voted and they made a statement.
Can you summarize?
I will leave some of this down here, but I believe also that we do need an independent review of this whole floodplain at my house on, in my area where I live in Kanema. We had a flood that came through there and wiped out a bridge in front of my house that had been there 120 years, built by my family. And no one said it could ever happen, but we are now starting to understand that we have new floodplain considerations, and we need to get a handle on it. I believe that Portland State University is an example of getting an independent person or group, somebody to come in and check, provide the checks and balances necessary to make sure that we fully understand what all of these implications are.
Thank you. Is that it, Tony? So do we have anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. The plan now is that we're going to leave this open, leave the application open, and if the commission agrees, then we're going to move this forward to a date certain of January 26. The, like as I said, it will be open. If you want to make more comments via writing, you certainly can do that. We will be having another hearing. At that time, we'll be talking much more specifically about some of the issues that came up today. And anything else? Anyone like to say at this point? If not, then I'd like a motion and... Or not.
We can just wait till the 26th if you'd like.
I'll do it.
All right.
I'm wishing to continue this hearing. CP 0805, DP 0803, TP 0811, US 0803, and Water Resources 0821.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tony, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Since my term expired in December, and I haven't officially been notified, I'm going to not be voting.
Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejoie?
Aye.
Chairperson Paul?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll get that fixed. Commissioner Dunn?
We've got a few commissioners out here.
Okay. Anything for us at this time?
I do not have anything else to add.
Okay. Well, anything from the commission? All right, if not, then we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming, and thanks for your comments.
Thank you.